Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I want to welcome Remka Brahmit Chaplin for the City of Milton Police and Fire to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Our God in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and to approach your throne of grace. And we pause tonight to pray for the mental and emotional and spiritual well-being of our families and communities in the city of Milton, and ask that you give us the wisdom and the resolve to stem the rising tide of performance pressure, social media pressure, economic pressure, depression and anxiety, and drug use, and even suicide that is slowly settling upon our community here in North Fulton. We pray that you bring the stakeholders together to stem that tide and bring real solutions to our families. And in the same vein, we pray that you would pour out your Holy Spirit tonight on the mayor and the city council and all those assembled here tonight. Give them your wisdom to decide and think and act in the best interest of our city. And for all those that serve our city in different capacity, may they experience your grace and your blessing and your protection tonight. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, June 1st, 2015, to order. Sudi, if you'll please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the June 1st, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Morick is out of town for the record. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. And Sudi, if you could please call the first item on the agenda.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15-149.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Sudi, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. And I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. If you'll read those items.
Our first item, approval of the May 4th, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda Item Number 15-150. Next, approval of the May 11th, 2015, work session meeting minutes. Agenda Item Number 15-151. Our third item is approval of a month-to-month probation services agreement between Judicial Corrections Services, Inc., the City of Milton, Georgia, and City of Milton Municipal Court. This is Agenda Item Number 15-152. Our fourth and final consent agenda item is approval of birdhouse license and use agreement between the City of Milton and Senior Services, North Fulton, Inc. This is Agenda Item Number 15-153.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Sorry.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Kuntz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, Sudi. We'll move on to reports and presentation. Sudi, if you'll call the first one.
First presentation is a presentation to the Cure NF with Jack Foundation, presented by the City of Milton Police and Fire Departments.
Sure.
They've been Milton residents for how long now?
You're about too long, probably. Almost eight years. Very, very happy.
They're good friends to both police and fire and come from the north, which is a little selfish on my part, but I tend to appreciate that. Their kids took a couple of programs with me, and I've been friends with the family for a few years now and enjoy them very much. The event at Fry's this past weekend, we coupled the event with some fundraisers for the Cure NF with Jack program. And if you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words about it.
Sure. I want to defer to the brains of the operation. Actually, no, to the brains of the operation. So I'd like to say a few things about Cure NF with Jack.
Well, Cure NF with Jack is about curing neurofibromatosis. It's the most common neurogenic disease that nobody's heard of. It occurs in 1 in 3,000 children, and any child can be affected by it. And we have, our mission is to cure NF within Jack's lifetime. NF has a variety of things that can go wrong, but mainly it's tumors that can grow anywhere along the nuchus, along the body. But it can also have, people with NF can have heart problems, or learning disabilities, a whole range of issues. So Jack's been our leader, and we have drew fundraisers, a lot of them at Milton, from lemonade stands to golf tournaments. We have raised close to $1 million for Children's Tumor Foundation, and we have recently received 501(c)(3) status for ourselves. And our hope is to directly target research. So, you know, a lot of times, doctors don't need $1 million or $1 billion dollars. They need $50,000 here, $100,000 there. So our goal is to make those clinical trials that are short on happening to make them happen.
I should say that the $1 million, we had a goal when Jack was seven, by the time he was 17 and graduated from high school, that we would have that $1 million. But through unbelievable generosity of not only the Milton community and our friends and family and all over the country, we hit that target in just four years. So now, of course, it's still not cured. So we're going to continue to do that. The next event is on June 15th at the Manor Golf and Country Club. We have a golf tournament. I'm not going to hit you to come play, because quite frankly, we don't have room for you. We sold it out already. But I can squeeze in some folks if you want. Yeah, so that's our goal with Jack and his brother Luke and sister Gracie and all of us, to just keep going to find a cure and effective treatment, not just for him, but of course, for the 1 in 3,000 people that are impacted by this disorder. So this event by these folks in the city of Milton was spectacular. When Sergeant Barone contacted me, I was just thrown for a lute a little bit. It was just so, so great. It's a special thing for us, too, as a family, because we do have law enforcement in our family. My father, Jack's grandfather, was a firefighter. So I totally wouldn't cry. No, I always do. So it's really special for us to have the community behind us. It just makes it, makes the good times better, it makes the hard times a little bit easier. So we appreciate the time and on everybody. I know it was hot out there that time to see them, and they're all in their uniforms. I'm like, oh, my goodness. Thank you, everybody, so much for all you're doing for us. And thank you for all you do for the community, day in and day out. It really means a lot to us, so thanks. Thanks. Do you want to say anything? You never, you never not want to say something. You know, I want to say thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want to say thank you?
Thank you.
Just when I come down.
We had tremendous support, obviously, because our team of police standing behind you, we broke up, and our fire team, the fire department as well. And our city manager, Chris Lagerman, behind you over there, he's not, they, it wasn't even a question of support. He brought it up, and it was, there was no thought. So as much as we love to do it, you guys are very near and dear, and hopefully we can do more for you. We were almost done, I thought, for $30 cents, so, you know, we hope to say more, but, you know, please offset this.
$630, or $29.34 for your foundation.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
In addition to that, the Fire Department received a donation from the community, and we'd like to pass that on and add to that for $221. Well, that's pretty spectacular.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. American. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Glad to support you, glad to represent you, and love you.
Thank you. Can I have you all get together for a photo as close as possible?
Can we get everybody in front of me? Just throw him out of the way, probably, make it for a better picture. Okay?
Get it. Yeah, get it a little bit. Y'all come forward.
Come on, little, you guys get around a little bit, let's get around. There's no, we can talk to you.
Put it on there.
Fire on one. They don't need the big back, but the big house.
Yeah, make sure we're all right. All set. All right. Make sure everyone's in it. That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Thank you.
What?
Okay.
I've been several months since I've worn it, but it cheers.
That's okay.
Now, I want to add, again, also, thank you to all our public safety for your support.
I'm good at taking one and passing down.
Okay, Sudi, if you'll call our next item.
Our next item this evening is a presentation by Progress Partners of North Fulton, Atlanta, that's being presented by Ms. Bethany Usri.
Thank you all so much for letting me join you. That's a tough act to follow, almost had me tearing up a little bit. And I believe Sudi may have passed out to you some packets, so hopefully each of you have those in front of you. Excellent. Well, as Sudi mentioned, I am Bethany Usri, Vice President of Progress Partners. I think I've had the pleasure of meeting almost all of you here with us tonight. I also have joining me this evening Olivia Ibrahim, who is the Project Manager of Progress Partners. Quickly, just want to go over what we're going to run through this evening. Primarily, want to talk to you a little bit about the restructure of Progress Partners that's happened over the last year. Also, run through the memorandum of understanding, of which there is a copy in your folder that we passed out. And then, lastly, answer any questions that you might have. Just a little bit of history on the restructure of Progress Partners. I think all of you are probably aware that Al Nash, who was the previous Executive Director of Progress Partners, actually took a position with the Development Authority of Fulton County at the end of last year. And at that time, we took the opportunity to kind of sit down with all of our city economic development professionals and the mayors and reevaluate the things that Progress Partners had been doing over the last few years, and just get some input to how we should do things moving forward. And you'll see, at the end of August, we had a lunch with the mayors and the city economic development professionals. Just to make a note, of course, at that point, Bill O'Connor was still representing the City of Milton and was present, excuse me, involved in that meeting with Mayor Lockwood. It was at that meeting where the mayors all decided that the city economic development professionals would act on their behalf in continuing the conversation forward with Progress Partners. We next had a roundtable discussion with all the economic development professionals, in which we talked about things Progress Partners had done over the last few years, things that we wanted, they wanted us to continue to do, things they wanted us to expand, and some things where maybe they'd like to take a little bit more control. We then had a follow-up meeting to that discussion with the city economic development professionals, where we drafted the revised MOU that you see in your packets this evening. And just specifically to Milton's case, as you all are well aware, the transition period for Bill to Sarah Ladark taking over was towards the beginning of December. So we did have the opportunity to sit down with Bill and Sarah together in early December, right when Sarah was coming on and Bill was leaving, to go over all of the things that we had discussed in which Bill had been involved, and make sure that Sarah was brought up to speed on everything that had been discussed before she was able to join the staff. And then, moving on into the month of January, Sarah and I were able to sit down and talk through any questions that she had, and able to schedule regular meetings, which we now hold monthly together with just her. And then also, she's joined all of our Partners Council meeting and other economic development meetings that we hold on a monthly basis. Just a few highlights from the MOU. And again, you can reference the copy that's in your packet. Just one thing to note is that it is a multi-year agreement, so all of these things will run over a span of years. And again, this is basically a continuation of the agreement that you all have signed in previous years with Progress Partners. The first item is regional marketing campaign. You'll find a few examples in the folders that we passed out of some of the ads that we've done. One of those is in the Business Georgia issue that's put out by Georgia Trend. And you'll see tabbed in that publication both the ad and advertorial that Progress Partners placed in that particular issue. You'll also see a copy of the annual North Fulton Market Report, which is put out by the Atlanta Business Chronicle. Again, we serve point on that publication every year. You'll see tabbed an ad for Progress Partners. And then also, we are able to help drive the content for those publications. We're currently working with the Business Chronicle for the 2015 edition, which will be coming out in July. And we plan to do the Business Georgia publication again as well. And all of those decisions have been made by the city economic development professionals to continue those two publications, and they also give input to any other advertising that we might do. Secondly, you'll see either an annual Economic Development Summit or a FAM tour. This year, we're working on the Economic Development Summit portion. We actually have that scheduled for September of 2015. It's going to feature a keynote speaker, which is named Russell Stahl, and he's the Executive Director of Greenville Forward in Greenville, South Carolina. He'll be coming to offer some insight into some of the, I guess, rebirth that Greenville has experienced, and some things that we can take some lessons from here in North Fulton. And then we'll also have panels highlighting transportation as well as investing in North Fulton. And each of the city economic development professionals have been serving on a committee with us, where we established the theme, agreed on who the speaker was going to be, who the panel speakers are going to be. We're also coordinating that with the Council for Quality Growth. You may have heard of other events that they've done in both Cobb and Gwinnett, so this is a similar event. It'll be the first annual here in North Fulton, and we're very excited about that. The FAM tour, we will be targeting that for 2016, and hope to work with Georgia Power in order to coordinate that. Our target audience for 2016 will be getting the metro project managers, statewide project managers, and then also some of the brokers in the metro area to come up to North Fulton and do a familiarization tour with the, through the six cities. Regional representation at trade shows and events. This February, I attended the Site Selectors Guild Annual Conference, which was with site selectors from all over the country. Also, was able to travel to Mercedes headquarters to help in the employee relocation, was able to discuss all of North Fulton, and specifically, many that were interested in considering Milton for, for a living for their families. In April, also attended the Health Information Management Systems Society Annual Conference. And then in June, I'll be attending the BIO convention with the State Department of Economic Development and the Innovation Crescent Regional Partnership. Again, these are the trade shows and events that the Regional Advisory Council, which is comprised of the city economic development professionals, have made the decision for Progress Partners to travel to and represent the North Fulton area. Lastly, under the category of other, you'll see that we have regional representation with the Atlanta Regional Commission, Georgia Power, Georgia Economic Development Association, the Georgia Department of Economic Development, and the Metro Atlanta Chamber. So as much as possible, Progress Partners is representing all of North Fulton with all of these organizations and several events that they hold on a monthly basis. And secondly, under that category is, we're still managing the Camera Ready program for North Fulton, and are working to, when we get any camera ready requests, excuse me, sending those over to Sarah, and then also working with Robin if there are any permitting questions with movies and things like that. And I do have to say that this past year, before Bill left, I did get the opportunity to actually go on a movie shoot with him in the city of Milton. So that was quite exciting to see that some of the hard work over the past few years with the Camera Ready program was paying off. And lastly, just want to answer any questions that you all may have about the proposed MOU. Again, there's a copy in your packet. It's very similar in nature to what you've seen over the last few years, just a little bit more well-defined, based on what the cities have agreed on. And my understanding is that this is just a presentation this evening, and that there will be a vote at another time. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bethany. Do you have any questions or comments on this presentation?
I don't believe we have a copy.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, that comes up on the 15th.
Okay, so we don't have a copy. What cities in North Fulton are currently?
Participating?
Participating.
From a financial standpoint, the cities of Alpharetta, Milton, and Roswell. And both Alpharetta and Roswell have already renewed their commitment for the upcoming fiscal year. And we are still actively working with both Johns Creek and Sandy Springs. I will say that both of those cities have contributed to specific initiatives. For instance, Sandy Springs was able to provide some funding for the HEMS conference, and the city of Johns Creek has made a small investment in one of the particular ads for this year. So we're still working to build full participation with them, and hope to have that defined clearly by the end of this year, by the end of 2015.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question? Bill?
I don't believe I saw your budget in the packet either. Could you go over it, please?
Pardon? Certainly, certainly. Our annual budget is right around $300,000. The portion of the budget that Milton gives money for, the $25,000, goes to line items, and I just want to make sure I have them down correctly. Sponsorships, advertising, conferences, and meetings. So specifically, your monies are only going into those categories of the budget.
To conferences. Could you elaborate on what conferences?
Uh-huh. So conferences and meetings would be some of those ones that I described, like the trade shows and events, so like the HEMS conference, the Site Selectors Guild, also the BIO show, things like that. So anything that we're going to in marketing in North Fulton.
What kind of, if you'd like to elaborate a little more, what kind of results have you gotten from those conferences that would directly benefit Milton?
So most of those have obviously just taken place in the last few months, but I have started building some relationships with some of the site selectors that are obviously making decisions for locations all over the U.S. and can certainly have North Fulton in the mix. In February, when I traveled there, I met several of them for the first time. And then, when I went to Chicago for the HEMS conference in April, I was actually able to schedule some follow-up meetings with some of the individuals I met from the first conference who are based in Chicago. So I'm continuing to build those relationships. I also was able to connect with some North Fulton companies at the HEMS conference as well, and set up some follow-up meetings. And I've also been providing to Sarah some trip reports following each one, and I don't know if she's been disseminating those to each of you, but I'm sure either she or I would certainly be willing to share those with you if you'd like to see more details. It outlines specific contacts that were made and follow-ups that were done as a result of each of those contacts at the various trips so far this year.
How many are on your staff currently?
It's just myself and Olivia.
Okay.
We run a tight leadership.
And what, what would you say your percentage of expenditures are for these conferences and trade show trips that you've been?
I would say that, other than salaries, those specific line items have the most money allocated to them. So those are the largest budget categories. We've put all the monies from the cities that Karen asked about. The full monies from Alpharetta, Roswell, and Milton are only put into those categories that support the MOU.
Okay, so are the, is Johns Creek benefiting from these trips and trade shows?
Again, we're still working through exactly the full level of participation. Being that this is our third presentation to city council this year, we've had some similar questioning from some other councils. And so we've started to take some steps to make sure that we're not giving too much to those that aren't participating in a financial way.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
My contact information is in your packet as well, so if you find that you have any questions between now and the 15th, I'll actually be at the BIO show on the 15th, so I won't be able to be present that evening. Please feel free to reach out. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Olivia, for being here, and Sarah, your involvement. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our first presentation items.
Our first item, consideration of RZ 15-11 to create the Arnold Mill Form Base Code, Chapter 64 of the City Code, Article 21. Agenda Item Number 15-154. Next, consideration of RZ 15-12, Kings Close with approximately 525 feet of frontage on the west side, located in the Second District, Second Section, in Land Lots 396 and 397 by Five Oaks Development, Inc., to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to R2A Residential to develop five single-family residences on 6.431 acres with minimum one-acre lots. Agenda Item Number 15-155. Our third presentation item is consideration of U15-03, VC15-02, 2780, Bethany Bend. in Land Lots 396 and 397 by Five Oaks Development, Inc., to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to R2A Residential to develop five single-family residences on 6.431 acres with minimum one-acre lots. Agenda Item Number 15-155. Our third presentation item is consideration of U15-03, VC15-02, 2780, Bethany Bend by Bob Dyke, to request a use permit for a daycare facility, Section 64-1809, for after-school program and summer camp within an existing church and a concurrent variance to allow a non-opaic fence for the playground enclosure, Section 64-1809B3. Agenda Item Number 15-156, our fourth and final first presentation item, consideration of an ordinance of the City Council to authorize Fulton County to conduct elections. Agenda Item Number 15-157.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the first presentation item.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're passing unanimous, city. We can move on to our public hearing. Do you think we can please sound the item?
Our item under public hearing is consideration of an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 15122, first presentation was at the May 4, 2015 Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is what we call the mid-year budget adjustments, and this is bringing in line some of the revenues and expenditures that we have received or project to receive or spend before the end of the fiscal year. In the general fund, the revenue appropriations will increase by $410,493 and expenditures will increase the same. The highlights for revenue amendments include prior year property taxes and utility taxes will increase by $120,000 and $23,500 respectively to account for higher-than-anticipated collections in those two line items. Motor vehicle taxes, if you remember, they did away with the birthday tax for motor vehicle taxes and put in its place the title abollorum tax. Well, we are splitting out those two different revenue sources and have changed the revenue appropriations accordingly. In motor vehicle taxes, since we are still receiving that until eventually it will phase out, we are decreasing that line item by $640,000. And in title abollorum tax, we're increasing that line item by $720,000. There's an $80,000 variance because of higher-than-anticipated revenues trending in that line item. Building permit revenues continue to trend upward, and an amendment of $70,000 is being proposed. And those are the highlights of some of the larger amendments that we're doing in revenues. In expenditures, the summary page that you have in your document is actually incorrect. In the public works line item, we will be increasing their, that budget by $38,000 and not $18,000 as proposed in the summary page that you see. But the detailed documents do capture the correct amounts. And the offset to that is other financing uses. It was showing $358,227 as an increase in that line for that particular department, and it's actually $338,227, and I'll go into that detail in just a moment. But again, the detailed spreadsheets are correct. In the Mayor and Council Department, there are three increases, and these are simple, small increases. One is $600 in professional fees to cover the cost of the sound system at the town hall meeting. And another, in the dues and fees for the Greater North Fulton Chamber, the annual dues for FY14 were invoiced after the fiscal year ended and hit at the FY15 budget. So that's an increase of $3,750. And then the education and training for Mayor's Day. All of you attended the Mayor's Day training, so there's an increase of $2,450 in that line item. In the information technology department, there's, there are two increases for two different line items. One is $6,500 for the OpenGov cloud-based tool that promotes transparency in financial reporting. And then there's a $9,211 increase for the ICMA analytics tool. And this is a performance measurement tool that is now, it's a cloud-based reporting tool as well. In the general government buildings department, there's an increase of $6,255, and this is to account for property taxes that we had to pay Fulton County for properties that we purchased after January 1, because we were not the owner of record. When we become owner of record, which was January 1 of this year, then we will not pay the property taxes for these, for those particular properties. In the police department, there's an increase in the vehicle repair and maintenance line item of $10,900, and this is offset by insurance proceeds received for a vehicle accident. So we offset that in the vehicle repair and maintenance account. In the public works department, there's an increase of $38,000 in professional fees, and this is to account for the removal of two houses. One is within Birmingham Park, and the other one is on the outskirts of the park. And these are both public hazards that we would like to remove. In debt service, there are two decreases that we're proposing, a total of $5,400, and this is for paying off the lease for the fire truck one year early. We had a savings there. In other financing uses, there's an increase of $338,227, and this is an operating transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund, and I'll go into detail of that in just a moment. So in the Capital Projects Fund, in the revenue line items, there's an increase of $100,000, and this is to account for a donation that we have received from Eagle Sticks to help offset the cost of renovating and improving fields at Northwestern Middle for lacro, girls' lacrosse, I believe that's what it is, girls' lacrosse, yes. And then the $338,227 increase to account for the operating transfer in from the general fund. That amount is being split out by, into land conservation, $285,227 is going into that line item. We're proposing to get for it to go into that line item. If you choose not to, we can always put that in fund balance. We just saw that as a hot topic in Milton, and so we figured we put the, that's kind of our bucket for this adjustment. We're moving $26,824 out of the general admin vehicle replacement reserve account and moving that into parts and recreation to account for the vehicle that we purchased for that department. $11,000 in other equipment is for a variable message board. Sorry, it was the rest of that. That is $11,000, the second one that we needed. Then in the Northwestern Middle IGA Fields line item, there's a $142,000 increase. $100,000 of that is the donation that we received from Eagle Sticks, and $42,000 is the city's contribution for that particular project. That is all I have to present to you tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and then open up. Any more questions for Stacy? Anybody?
Council, if I could just to highlight, that was the last thing that Stacy mentioned, the $42,000 to the Eagle Sticks Lacrosse. That's in addition to the $25,000 that's already funded for Eagle Sticks Lacrosse. I think I've discussed this with a couple of you, but maybe not all. So I'd just like to highlight that one of the things we seek to do in this mid-year budget adjustment is to have the contribution of the HOY Association and Eagle Sticks Lacrosse be equal so that we are treating boys and girls sports equally, and each have contributed $100,000 to the project for the park that they'll be playing in. So that's why we needed to add an additional $42,000, if you all agree to that, to be able to make that Northwestern project happen, but have both of the contributions equal between the two programs.
The only question I guess I'd have on that is the, if, when those fields are renovated, they're not getting exclusivity on those fields, are they? Or I don't know, how does that work if another program wanted to use the fields as well?
They're making an investment into the facility. We have the intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County. Ultimately, it's our decision as to how the park, or the field in that particular case, is programmed.
Sure.
It has the ability to be used full-time by the lacrosse program. It's grown to that, grown to that level.
Sure.
You know, if all of a sudden a tenant should fall off and field space should become available, then yes, it would be ours to program.
Got you.
Okay. Anybody else on that? All right, we'll bring it back later in our agenda. We'll move on then to, there's no items under zoning tonight. So Suti, if we can move over to unfinished business, if you can call those items.
First item is consideration of revisions to Milton City Code, Chapter 22, Fire Prevention and Protection. Agenda Item Number 15147. This was discussed at the May 11 Councilwork Session and first presentation at the May 18 Regular City Council Meeting. Mr. Matt Marianna.
Good evening. As you said, this was the item that I presented in the Councilwork Session in the middle of last month, and it pretty much reflects exactly what it was that I presented. And I would be happy to entertain any questions that you all have about what you've had a chance to read.
Anybody have any questions for Matt? Bill?
Did you highlight the questions that came up during that session? Have you noted them specifically here, Matt?
About?
I don't recall what all we did.
Well, I remember one of the things that we talked about was turning radius on the corners, and that is addressed in there. And then the other, the other question that I recall is how this works out with the other things that community development, public works has. And if you'll notice, under Section C, the, I don't have page numbers on here, but under Section 22-113 with the Fire Lane and Apparatus Access Road section, Section C actually provides a caveat for conflicts to be worked out with the other departments that are involved. Keeping a focus on safety, but understanding that there could be some situations where not everything lines up perfectly. So there is some ability to work through those issues.
Thank you.
I guess my question was, how would be, how does, Carter, how does Public Works feel about the conflict resolution and everything? Okay with you on this? You guys have worked together on this okay?
We've worked together on it over the years fine, so I didn't have any problem with it at all.
I figured as much. Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll open up for a motion then.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15-147.
Second. I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, and second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're passing unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Suti, if you'll please call the next item. We're on unfinished business.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 15122. First presentation was at the May 4 City Council Meeting. Public hearing was held this evening. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Staff just recommends approval of the amendments as presented.
Okay. Any other questions, Karen?
Now, we will have one final budget amendment we will do prior to year-end to clean up any little things that need to be cleaned up, correct?
We will.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll open up for a motion then.
May I move that we approve an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2015 budget and for each fund of the City of Milton, Agenda Item Number 15-122.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're passing unanimous, Suti.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, Suti, if you'll move on to new business, call the item.
First item under new business, consideration of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscapes, Inc., for the Northwestern Middle School practice field expansion. Agenda Item Number 15-158. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a project that we have been working on for over a year. We've been trying to come up with ways to expand the physical practice and play space for girls in the lacrosse program, which continues to blossom and grow. Our registration for this past year, 2015, will hit over 450 girls. And what we've got is an agreement with the Northwestern Middle School that we can modify the existing baseball/softball field and create out of the outfield a practice space of 85 yards by 50 yards, which would then also serve the school, gives them more opportunity for play space for their own activities as well.
Any questions on this, Matt?
No questions.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, real quick, Mayor. So Jim, is there a size difference between men's lacrosse and women's lacrosse fields?
Well, this was, this will not be a full regulation game field.
Oh, so it's just for?
This is, this is a practice field. It could be used for the littlest ones, the seven-year-olds, as a game field.
I was just wondering why we referenced it as a girls' lacrosse practice field.
As compared to a boys' lacrosse practice field.
Actually, as compared to a lacrosse practice field.
Well, I was making the delineation that it's a field that we're trying to schedule girls on grass fields and boys on synthetic turf fields.
Understood. Yeah, just, I mean, given what we just talked about, that there's, you know, we're trying to stay on par with programs and budgets and everything else. I thought it was sort of weird that we would use gender in the description of the field.
Again, the only intent there was to delineate where we're placing various programming.
All right.
Around the city.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, if I don't have any, then I think Matt, you would want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 15-158.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coote, second by Councilmember Luss. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Suti, if you'll please call the next item. And Jim, if you'll just stand right there.
Our last item of the evening, consideration of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscapes, Inc., for the Northwestern Middle School baseball/softball field renovation. Agenda Item Number 15159. Mr. Jim Craig.
Mayor and Council, this is a second project at Northwestern Middle School. We have identified space between the existing tennis courts and the existing rectangular game field that the girls use that we can modify and provide appropriate warm-up space so that girls can be warming up before their games start.
Okay. Back up. Any questions for Jim on that?
I guess the cost of the city, because the lacrosse is putting $100,000 into this one, that our cost is only going to be the remainder, which is $32,712. Is that right?
Well, the first amendment, I mean, on the first item that was passed before, that was approximately $132,000, and this next item that we're discussing now is $34,000. So Eagle Sticks kicked in $100,000 towards both projects.
They're backwards. Okay. I got it. Never mind.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? And if not, I'll open that one up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 15-159.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coote, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're passing unanimous, Suti. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Does anybody, council have anything they want to report on? Bill?
Memorial Day. I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody that was involved in it, all the staff, police, fire, Boy Scouts, former military personnel. I think it was a great event. I think... Uh, I think it was a great event, and I think, uh, it has gotten better and better each year, and certainly the attendance has increased phenomenally each year, too. So, I think, uh, we have a tradition here, I think, that's going to, uh, to carry through, be sustainable throughout, uh, the city. Uh, it's being recognized, uh, not that we're in competition with any other city here, they all do their own thing, and I'm grateful for the fact that they, they do put on, uh, ceremonies like this, but I think we've established our own unique type of ceremony here in Milton, and I'm proud of it and proud of everybody that's participated in it.
Well, I can, uh, say that if that speaker was your second choice, I'd hate to see what the first choice was, because she was incredible. I mean, she was, she was excellent speaker, so...
Quite a story.
Yes, very, very touching story.
Good deal.
Good driving across the state.
Yeah, that's great. And I just want to say, too, um, at our next work session, when we talked about, um, moving forward with conservation and the legacy initiative and, uh, all these things at the city that we've done, and, uh, hopefully can do in the future, so please be prepared any ideas you guys have, and, uh, things that we can add or subtract or whatever to move forward with that, and, uh, you know, really, be able to show our community what we have done and what we're, what we can do in the future as far as conservation and preservation of Milton, so... Anybody else? Open up, staff.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember... I was about to say, I've got just a couple of quick updates tonight.
And then Carter.
Um, having said that, I'd like to just update you quickly on a couple of things that, uh, you know, I know will generate, uh, conversation in the community, and sometimes it's better to just have the information than to wonder if that information is. I know there was some discussion about a month ago or so, um, at the roadway, Birmingham Road, immediately in front of a new neighborhood that's going in there, a single street cul-de-sac across from Jim Bell's house, there was discussion as to whether or not a turn lane was warranted or not, and whether or not the impacts would be such that the impact would be mitigated on Mr. Bell's property. Um, I could tell you that just, uh, at the end of last week, we received a plan as to what that intersection would look like on Birmingham Road. It is not a plan that would meet our permitting requirements, so I can tell you that what was submitted on Friday will not be permitted, um, we'll have to take another stab at it, but I just wanted to give you an update that we saw something that didn't, uh, doesn't work according to our standards, so we'll be working with them to go back, um, and again, with the, through the lens of minimizing impact, um, but also maximizing traffic safety. So, I'm pleased to know that we're working on that. Um, Councilmember Lusk and I have, uh, immersed ourselves, or gotten ourselves back into, unfortunately, a pond issue on Thompson Road. Um, I bring that up just because, uh, we'll be meeting with the contractor in the morning, and I just want everybody to know that that's something that is being looked at and will be evaluated. Um, with the acquisition of Providence Park, uh, one of the things we need to do is we need to convert the cell tower over to us being the lessor, as opposed to Fulton County. Um, we, uh, got good at that when we finally figured out how to do the one at Station 42, so I can tell you this was going to be a, uh, much more streamlined process, and we should be able to convert the ownership over just as soon as we have a quick claim in hand that's been recorded, we can transmit that to Crown Castle and start to receive the revenues from that cell tower. Uh, Fulton County right now is receiving that, nineteen hundred dollars per month, and that will be the continued rate that we receive from that tower that will be located on, then, our park. Um, the other thing I want to, uh, let you know, in case you start to get any questions, is, uh, over the course of the last several years, the Justin Adams and Miss Green property has been at the forefront of our, um, attention as we've worked through cleanups and everything else. The property sits over there, it sits in a state of, uh, strong decay, I would say, at this point, uh, and it, uh, is quite a nice, where the thing that, um, didn't happen as a product of that property is that there was never a for-sale sign that went up, and never a under-contract sign that went up, both of which I think would have been helpful for the community to know, um, that there was actually progress moving with those properties. That property is under contract, um, it is likely to close in a couple of weeks, there should be a fairly strong showing out there this weekend of, uh, state family members who are there to collect any last things that they want from the property before it closes or changes hands. Uh, so, if you drive by that and just go, "What's going on?", um, that's what's going on, it will likely, um, be built for a single-family residential. At this point, what we're hearing is potentially three houses, which would certainly be approved on that size of a parcel, um, and probably a much better use than it sits in its existing condition, so, um, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that, in case you drive by and go, "What in the world is going on?".
Pop on that sale, will we recoup ours?
Yes, I was going to ask, well, we're going to be able to get some of the, our costs back?
Yes. Yep, um, the buyer, I don't want to disclose who it is, obviously, but, uh, very reputable, uh, home builder, um, who understands the complexities of that site that, um, still deserves to be built.
Okay. And what was the total cost that Milton has expended on that site that we had to lean for, you know?
A little over forty thousand dollars, I think.
That'd be nice to get that back.
Agreed, agreed. I just wanted to let you know that usually when properties go for sale, you see a sign pop up, and then you see an under-contract sign go up, but all that would have happened, it might have caused some of the people to drive by to question less as to what's going on. Um, that particular property didn't sell that way, or it's not in the process of being sold that way, but that is an update, there's nothing confidential about the information, just an update for the council. Um, that's what I have, uh, by way of reports that I want to make, uh, to you tonight. We do have our department updates, if you're good, we can roll through those, and if there's any lingering questions, we'd be happy to, happy to answer.
Yeah, can we go back, just if you don't mind, like, Carter, maybe when you talk about the, uh, property on Birmingham Road and the, the, uh, lane and across from Mr. Bell's property, Carter, do you mind just, real quick, brief recap of what, you know, I know a lot of folks are not in favor of having a D-cell lane or a turn lane, um, but kind of the parameters that, you know, would kind of dictate that nowadays based on the engineering and traffic counts versus, you know, everybody can say, "Well, they don't have one for X neighborhood". Um, could you just kind of, just a real quick, kind of recap on how you guys have to look at that?
Sure, there are a couple of different thresholds that, uh, we look at when we're evaluating both D-cell lanes, which would be the right turn lane into the development, as well as left turn lanes. Uh, those volumes are based on either the turn volumes that are, um, generated by the subdivision itself or the development itself, or the volumes of traffic that are on the mainline road in front of that particular development. And so, depending on the speed limit, if the volumes on that, on the mainline road are four or six thousand vehicles a day, depending on that speed limit, uh, it can warrant a turn lane regardless of the number of left turn lanes that go into the development. What we're looking at there is anytime you stop traffic on a mainline road at those higher speeds, you have a, uh, very significant, uh, traffic, uh, safety hazard there, so we try and move that traffic out of the road, both on the left-hand turn movement and the right-hand turn movement. Um, we do try to look at the size of the subdivision, and so for very small subdivisions, um, there are some thresholds which Sarah has been going through to kind, to, to evaluate not only the safety impact, but the valuation and economic impact of, of that type of thing. And so, we, we look at a number of different conditions, and we make the determination about whether or not the, uh, left turn or right turn lanes are required. Uh, we've done that on this Birmingham Road one, um, it triggers a left turn lane and right turn lane based on the volumes that we're seeing on Birmingham Road. Um, we are doing what we can to try and minimize those impacts, both, um, to the development itself, as well, as well as adjacent properties across Birmingham Road and right next to it, so, um, at this point, we are working through with the engineer what is the best way to minimize those impacts, and, and right now, really, everything is being kept within the right-of-way, but we are having an eye on, even though those impacts are within the right-of-way, what it is doing to particularly the trees on Mr. Bell's property, uh, on the other side of the road, to make sure we can get these improvements in, as well as drainage improvements associated with that, with, without really doing any damage to those trees, so, that's where we are right now, working through with the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Before we get into the published ones, I do want to, you know, Kathy's probably laying at me, even though I haven't turned around, I was supposed to announce tonight that we officially today have our CO for the Thomas Byrd Senior House, um, so that's good, the Senior Services will be moving in tomorrow, and, uh, with kind of a soft opening to make sure that everything works right, and then next week we'll do the official ribbon cutting, so, um, that building received its CO today.
How many, that certificate of occupancy, how many fish does that allow?
Anywhere between three, four, or maybe nine. Just depends on what the ghosts have done with them that particular day.
Those who don't know, the fish have kind of been coming and going.
Yes, they have. It's Doryal.
I wish I could take credit for it, too.
I would, I have had requests from residents that ask how they might be able to help volunteer with, uh, with that, if there's, when that's open, if we might be able to...
We can, because that's not a program that's run by us, I'd like that volunteerism to occur at the, you know, with that, whatever standard Senior Services or Fulton has. Now, the, now that the facility will be open every time the building's open during the day, there will be a, uh, representative from Senior Services North Fulton there, so, um, I'd say, tell the folks to give us a couple of weeks, but then if, when we'll stop by and just simply ask those questions.
Strong bargain, sure.
Also, i- it's good news tonight, and, uh, I'll ask Chief Edgar to come up, he doesn't have a lot of information, so as he's walking up, I'll tell you that this is going to kind of just be a what-we-know announcement at this point, because it is as timely as today, um, but it does appear to be very good news for the City of Milton in that, uh, we've received our new ISO rating from ISO, so, um, with that, he's not going to be able to answer a lot of questions, because we really don't know yet exactly what it means to Milton, but it's, it's good news, so we'll, we'll tell you what we do know, so, have you said that, Chief?
Mayor and Council, uh, as Chris mentioned, I don't have the detailed report, but we did receive notification from ISO that our classification has gone down from a four to a two slash two X, which basically means that majority of our properties in the City of Milton have gone down considerably to a two, and there are properties within the community that are outside a five-mile radius of a fire station, or beyond a thousand feet of a fire hydrant. So, those particular properties would have a separate class of the two X. Uh, and again, I, I can't answer any questions, I have the details, but alls I can say is that, that drop from a four to a two certainly sits at the firefighters. Those guys really worked hard at obtaining training hours and all the other inspections, the hydrant maintenance, all of that stuff was put together, and that's what, um, drove that, that number down to a two, so I'm proud of them, those are the guys that did this and brought this to the, to the community, so...
That's, uh, great news and great work, because that's, uh, quite an accomplishment to, uh, get down to...
It is, very, very proud of it, from when we started off as, I guess, um, inheriting Fulton County's five-nine, going to a four, and now going to a two slash two X, um, it, in such a short period of time, I think is, is a great accomplishment, so...
Yeah.
And again, it falls, it falls with the firefighters, because those are the guys that are out there doing it.
Congratulations, great effort.
Is this something that people will need to notify their insurance companies of, or is insurance companies automatically notified, or, I mean, do we need to get some, something out, press out about it once you have all the details?
And that would be my hope, is that we could do that. Um, I'm not sure that the insurance companies would be willing to run out and advise their, um, their, um, stakeholders in that they've got a lower rating now that could benefit them in insurance, um, you know, in their insurance rates.
But it's a very positive thing for the citizens, to, we need to make sure they know what they need to do to go to their insurance companies and...
Right. We just want to get the detail package in hand, so we know exactly what we're announcing, but, uh, we do have enough that the official letter from ISO came in today that says, "Your protection classification is a two", which is, which is great, great work by the fire.
Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, now we'll get to the quick reports in Carter.
Carter, anyway.
It'll be known forever as the quick reports in Carter.
Starting with, uh, Chief Crookoff.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'd like to start by, uh, thanking the City Manager for having the Fire Chief come and hit one out of the park just before I walk up here.
Hit you too.
Always good to follow something like that. Um, just, uh, I'll be quick. Um, back in the second week in May, I believe it was the 11th and 12th, uh, the City Manager and I were able to head down to the Carter Center to a symposium on human trafficking. It was, uh, they had, uh, many, many compelling speakers there, it was, uh, it was a great opportunity to be able to not only learn more about the issue of, of human trafficking, but get a better understanding of, of its impacts, possibly locally, um, and it was, uh, Councilmember Lusk, uh, Morg, I'm sorry, put us in, uh, in contact with that, and it was, uh, it was a great opportunity, not something you would, you would normally hear about. Um, for eyes, obviously, we had the, uh, the presentation earlier, that was, uh, that was really nice, I, just want you to know, I had no idea that, that Mr. and Mrs. Byrkes were from the north, we got involved with that way ahead of time, that, though I must say, I found out during that presentation that he was a Boston fan, so it negated the fact that they were from the north. Uh, that, it was, it was a great opportunity for us, we enjoyed it, we worked great with the Fire Department, uh, Chief Edgar, and it was, uh, it felt good for everybody involved to be able to, to be able to provide that. Um, Memorial Day, I just wanted to reach out and, uh, thank Councilmember Lusk, uh, this year we had some officers involved that were able to, uh, our veterans that were on the job, were able to raise the flags, they were very honored to be, uh, part of that presentation, it reverberated throughout the department. It was, uh, it was, it was great to be involved at that level, and I thank you for that opportunity. Um, just one incident of note, over the last couple of weeks, on May 21st, Officer Bouzian responded to a fire call over at a residence on Al Stonefield Drive. Um, there was an act of fire in the stove when he got in there, um, and he was fortunate enough, he grabbed his fire extinguisher on the way out and was able to extinguish the fire, and there were, uh, there were a few members of the family there that were, were at different levels of, of mobility, and he was able to get everybody out of the house, he did a fine job all around, um, good ending.
Take that, Chief.
That's good. Um, and, uh, just in closing, um, Milton Police Department, we recently embarked on a partnership with, uh, Behavioral Health Link, um, they're known as BHL, they are a privately-owned service provider that, uh, they specialize in behavioral health services, uh, both mental health and substance abuse issues, which are, are quite often co-occurring, and, uh, we have partnered with them, in fact, they've started their, their in-house training for us. Where this really comes in handy in real life, we have, uh, we sat down as, uh, as a leadership team, we were talking about some of the issues that, that we're dealing with when it comes to substance, substance abuse and mental health, and there were certain, uh, certain things that we could and could not do when people were in crisis, and we started troubleshooting one of the issues, when, when people are in, in crisis, severe crisis, and they're considering doing something to themselves, um, under Georgia law, we, we were kind of handcuffed in what we were able to do as a police department. We, uh, we made a great connection with BHL in the fact that they have a mobile crisis team, and they're available 24/7, they will come out, uh, at a, if someone is in crisis upon our phone call, they will come out, they will assess the situation, they're obviously, uh, more capable and trained to be able to handle this, and they also have people that are certified to write the 10-13s, which are the medical, um, orders to be able to get someone into a facility if they are in fact in that level of crisis. Um, additionally, they are going to connect us with ser, uh, services associated with substance abuse, and they don't only work with municipalities, they work with the individuals as well, so, once we solidify this relationship a little bit more, we're looking forward to, uh, moving in a, in a more obvious, uh, nature, be able to show, be able to market us a little bit, and make sure that all our community members understand what these services are and how they're provided. They are a for-profit company, but they, we don't pay anything, this is done entirely through, and I'm going to have to look down, through, uh, the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, DBHDD, um, so, when we need their services, they're there, in fact, we have used them already, um, in one call, and that, the outcome was quite positive, so we're very pleased with that. Um, any questions?
I think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Carter.
No comment.
Thank you, Carter, moving on.
Just a couple of quick things, second half of my report this month. Um, Birmingham Road, Hopewell Road intersection project has begun, that was awarded to Baldwin, probably seen that, uh, staking and construction, uh, zone being set up, probably about sixty days for utility relocations, got some poles that need to be moved out of the way, so, hopefully that can be done relatively quickly till, um, construction begins in earnest on that site. Uh, Big Creek-Greenway connection, we were to attend the Alpharetta Council Meeting last month, that got moved to June 15th, so, uh, don't have any feedback from them on that particular project. A quick message on the ARC funding projects that we had out there, uh, we had talked about, uh, the Big Creek, uh, Greenway Transportation Master Plan, uh, Providence at Bethany, 140 at Ranchet, um, Green at 140, and the Crab Apple Intersection Project, those are the ones that we had submitted, um, because the federal funding has been a little bit in limbo here... Because the federal funding has been a little bit in limbo here, they did not take any new projects on that. So the only project right now that currently will qualify for that under the current call is going to be the additional funding requested for the Crab Apple Intersection improvements. Hope to hear something back on that in August. All the other projects, region-wide, all the new projects have been pushed off, hopefully maybe hear something in the January, February timeframe. That's it.
Okay.
I won't go into all the other important projects we're doing, but if you have any questions on them, we'll have you answered.
We'll have a special work session.
I do want to say thank you for getting that Providence and Birmingham, the additional project completed. I actually drove over it on my way here, and it is, they finished the paving today, so.
Good, very good.
It is a, getting rid of the bump sign that's been there for eternity.
I know, we can make a little bit of light of Carter's first presentation, how long it was, but there are a lot of projects that are ongoing. Do you have any questions about any of them specifically? I think Councilmember Lusk does.
Say again about the Transportation Master Plan, is that RFQ been issued?
It has been. So that'll be a locally funded project, and we'll just scale it to, I think our budget for that this year is 225,000, and we're just going to scale the project to that.
Thank you.
And I echo what Chris says, you know, we're kind of joking around, but obviously, everything in public works as very serious, and you guys have a lot of great projects you're doing, so we appreciate everything. All right.
Moving on to Parks and Rec, a quick update from Jim.
I'm not going to announce the acquisition of Providence Park, my presumption is that you all know that at this point. Do want to let you know that City of Milton hosted, for the first time in its history, a GRPA North Meeting, and we had over 30 different agencies that we hosted here in a roundtable discussion of directors and deputy directors of issues that are affecting each of our communities and various solutions we've been coming up with, challenges we've been having. It was a very helpful and useful meeting, and that was, that was exciting for us, first time we've hosted a GRPA event here. Next, I want to let you know that we have successfully concluded a lease for use of the Community of Christ Church, which the senior center moved out of. And as of today, we opened Camp Joyful Souls at the Community of Christ Church, and it is the biggest registration we've ever had. We have the largest total number of participants and the largest total number of participant weeks. I measure by how many weeks a person comes, as well as how many different people, and we blew away our best numbers, and that was from two years ago. So that's, that's been a huge success. We also had some opportunity to change some of the leadership there, and we were able to promote from within. We have two counselors who have been with us since the program started, and they have graduated, they have their degrees working with people with special need, and they are running as supervisors of the program right now. We also opened basketball camp today. The numbers from this week's camp are similar to last year's first week of basketball camp. That's over at Northwestern, and it seems, it's going well. You may recall two weeks ago that you folks approved a resetting of fields at North, excuse me, at Cogburn Woods, Hopewell Middle School, and also at Friendship Community Park. That work has started today, and the sod should be completed by Friday. And the last I want to let you folks know is, we did hire a temporary employee to help me this, for the summer. Coach Van Keys, who works at Milton High School, has come on board to help us out with all the activities that we have going this summer. And Coach Keys is highly regarded in the community. Over half the Camp Joyful Souls casters know him and love him, and he has spent the last year of his time working with any student of Milton who has any need for a special accommodation. So we've, we've got the square peg in the, in the square hole, and we're very excited.
Okay. Any questions on Parks, Bill?
Jim, I assume the Thomas Byrd House is going to be under your jurisdiction, is that correct?
I believe that to be so, yes.
Next Wednesday, the 10th, I believe is the grand opening, is that correct?
I'm not aware of that, sir.
The ribbon.
Ribbon cutting.
The ribbon cutting is next Wednesday, the 10th.
Right. I guess Kathy's going to report on it?
Kathy will, yes.
Will you send us an invite, request of that, to make sure it's on our calendars?
You should have it. There is one that has been sent to elected officials in the form of a calendar invite, so if, check and see if you've gotten it, if you haven't, I'll send it again.
Yep, I got it.
Well, I guess my question in regards to that is, how widely is that going to be disseminated throughout the community? And are we going to specifically invite family members, relatives, and those who've been involved in the, not only the creation, but the evolution of that facility over the years?
I could take the answer to that question, and to the, the one that was doing that research for me on families, if you're talking about direct descendants of the Byrds, is Norman, and he, he's indicated he's found some, so I'll need to check in with Norman and make sure that, that we get the right invites out.
I spoke to him earlier this afternoon, he had 59 pages of genealogy, I guess as it relates to that property.
Pretty impressive, he told me he was going back 14 generations, and that's, that's hard to do.
Several living members in this area, so that's why I specifically asked about that.
Okay, well, we can get together, yeah, and make sure we're on the same page on that. Matt?
I just want to say I drive by Bell Memorial just about every other day, and the rectangular fields look great. So now that those are taking shape and form, and I'm excited to see what that park's going to look like when we get all done, so I just want to say a good job on that.
Well, that's Carter and Matt Folsom and Astor Group. But I will also tell you that since now people see the actual fields coming together, the emails, the phone calls, being stopped over in Kroger when I'm shopping, I mean, it's the people, just the excitement in the community is, is real. It's, it's a lot of fun.
What blend of fertilizer are you using on those fields? Pretty green, isn't it?
I noticed, Matt, you didn't say anything about the triangular fields. Find nitrogen.
I'm sorry, my microphone didn't work there, sorry.
All right.
I read your lips.
Just as a point of reference as well, for the opening of the senior house next week, the overflow parking is going to be at Shannadale Farm. David Shannon was nice to offer his, his facility as the overflow parking.
Okay. Kathy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me just segue into a little more conversation about the Byrd House. The grand opening is scheduled for next Wednesday from 11:30 until 1:00 PM. And so I believe that the invitations are going out, and lunch will be served, my understanding, from donations from Milton Restaurants, actually, so that will be very nice. And I also really need to mention that the Byrd House has just been a labor of love and a real team-building exercise by so many people, so many employees of the city. Everyone really stepped up, right down to the reconstruction of the fish pond. I mean, it's just been a terrific coming together, and people just really did a lot of things that they didn't really have to do, but, but they came and they very willingly did it, so it was, it was a great experience for us as well, so. Just to, pardon me, let you know, there are several major impactful projects that are going to be coming your way this summer, that we've been working on for a long time, and they have finally percolated up. And let me just start with the Arnold Mill Corridor Form-Based Code. That is something, as you know, we developed a master plan on it, and now the Form-Based Code will be the implementing zoning that will carry out the intent of that vision that you've previously approved. You'll be seeing that as soon as, next week, you'll have a presentation on that by our consultant, and then it will, will come before you for your consideration the following week. The impact fee program is moving along. You, at your July work session, will receive a presentation on the capital improvement element of the impact fee program, which is a requirement of this program, that you will be asked to transmit onto the ARC and Department of Community Affairs for their review. And subsequent to that, you will then review the ordinance and the fee structure, but that will come later this fall. So it's sort of a two-parter, and the first part you'll be seeing in July. The other major program that I'd like to talk about a little is the Conservation Subdivision Ordinance. As you know, we've had two public information meetings on this. The third one is scheduled for July 10th over at the Crab Apple Courthouse. I'm sorry, I say July, I'm sorry, June 10th. And then from there, it will go on to the Planning Commission at the end of June, and then if all goes well, it would then come to you for your review and consideration during the months of July. In addition, there are some regulatory actions that you will be seeing shortly. RZ 15-12 to rezone to, I'm sorry, five single-family residences on King's Close will be before you this month, as well as a use permit, to request a use permit for a daycare facility for an after-school program and summer camp at the Morningstar Church, you'll also see this month. And then next month in July, you will be reviewing a rezoning petition to develop two single-family residences on Francis Road. So that's in the queue for this summer, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for Kathy? Also, your comments on the Thomas Byrd House, it really did turn out very nice, and a lot of people helped out, and one question, how much do you charge to do windows? Kathy's scraping the windows down.
And that was a labor of love, I don't do windows in my own house, so I mean.
Good deal, so thanks, everybody that helped.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Sarah?
Hi, sorry, it doesn't, like, I just have, it doesn't hurt, it just sounds really bad, I promise. I'm getting better. So just a couple of things, I'm sorry. I told you all at the last meeting that I put our three large parcels of property into CoStar, so they could be searched when site selectors are looking for available properties, and already in one month, we've had two calls, one on the 13560 Morris Road property and one on Deerfield. So that's just in one month, we've already had two people interested, so that's great. And then I met with a restaurant who is looking to be the anchor rest, another anchor restaurant for the Crab Apple development when City Hall opens in 2017. So hopefully we'll get some more interest around that. But other than that, do you all have any questions about the Progress Partners presentation that you would like to ask me? I'd be happy to answer questions. If you don't mind listening to my voice, I promise it doesn't hurt.
It's kind of like, like fingernails on chalk.
I know, I'm sorry.
Any questions for Sarah? Matt?
My, my only thought about Progress Partners is, I mean, obviously, we've got some questions that we're giving them some funds, and what are we getting out of it as well? Part of it's the, their structure, I think, I would almost like to see maybe some kind of a Progress Partners board with, you know, if you participate, then you should be able to sit on that board. And maybe it'd be a duly represented appointee by the council, or maybe council itself, in that perspective, but, you know, if there's any way you can make a recommendation or talk about things like that, I think there needs to be a little more, as much as you're going out there recruiting, it's hard because you're recruiting for a general area, and you can get some benefit without necessarily having to participate, you know, and their listing their services, I think, is good. But it's just a thought I, I had, actually, I talked with Belle Isle about that last year in Alpharetta, and, you know, that may be a possibility. So I don't know if you'd like to just weigh that in your thoughts, but, you know, maybe you sit down with me at some point in time and just get some more of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I completely agree. Right now, the council, council consists of the six cities, and they're all equally represented, whether they give money or not. And then some of the other stakeholders, like the CID is on there, there's, Georgia Power gives them money, so they're on there. And one thing that I know I've talked a lot about with Alpharetta is, we, we need to be getting more, because we're giving money, and I understand that we're a region, so we have to represent the whole region. There should be something more that we get, because I was kind of surprised you all didn't bring it up, that they, this isn't the first time they've asked for the money, I believe you all have been giving it since 2010 or 11, and so that means you guys have given upwards of $100, $125,000, while a Johns Creek has given money towards an ad, and they still get their same logo on there. So that's something that I know Alpharetta and Roswell and I have been talking about a lot in the last six months. So hopefully the, this MOU is pretty much, I mean, that's what they're willing to present this year. But hopefully, over the next six months, before they put together another one for 2016, we'll be able to influence that in ways that really reflects that we're giving money.
I would like to see a little more firmness in that direction.
Yes.
We haven't had that much in the last two years.
I mean, if we don't get the money, does our level of service we get from them change?
That is a question that I have privately asked, and they don't really have an answer. So I don't know. I mean, there, of course, it would, because their budget would fall $25,000, so they wouldn't be able to attend as many events, they wouldn't be able to do the same sorts of things. So of course, the level of service that they would be able to provide to everybody would fall.
Well, you may, you may want to let them know that we did ask that question, so.
Okay, I will.
Council, I'll also let you know that it was by design that there was not a presentation on the same night that then there was the MOU brought forward, so that there was an opportunity for there to be a couple of weeks, where I could, I and Sarah collectively or individually could meet with you kind of in a one-on-one basis to get your thoughts as to what we do want to do going forward, so that when we bring something forward in two weeks from tonight, is the right thing. That was, that was not by happenstance that they ended up on two, two different meetings.
Okay. Matt?
I guess another question we've had, you know, and maybe just a general feel for doing business in Milton, you know, what are you hearing?
Well, I had a lady call me this morning, and I had to apologize to her for my voice, too, but she told me that she could handle it. And her husband recently relocated here, and they chose Milton, she said she looked at an aerial view of Metro Atlanta, and just from the aerial view, she liked the way that Milton looked, and she could tell that it was different. And I told her, she asked like about what kind of growth we had, and the potential and the retail view of our home, and I explained that we have a city architect on staff, that the development that we were doing was in pockets and being very thought out, and that we weren't looking to bring in just jobs, that we were looking for the right jobs to come here. And she was just ecstatic, and she was so positive. And then I was in New York for Memorial Day, and on the plane coming back, the lady across the aisle from me happened to be a Milton resident, and heard me tell the lady next to me that I work for the city, and she was like, oh, hi! And I handed her my card, and her daughter said, well, do you have any grievances you'd like to share? And I was like, oh, great, on an airplane, fantastic. And she had nothing but positive things, she, again, reiterated that she wanted responsible growth, and I told her that we were working on it and sticking to the codes that we had in place. And then I gave her a pair of the city sunglasses that we have, and she was happy. So I mean, I think people are happy with us, and.
We need to have a bag of those glasses to hand out.
My purse, and I was like, I have a pair of sunglasses. So, I mean, I think it's good. The feedback on the website so far, I've heard great things from people, so people moving in the direction.
All right. Good deal.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have anything else? Not, we'll conclude the meeting, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
City clerk.
That's next time.
Next time, I'll say. It was in my thinking this time.
A move to adjourn.
Second. If you have a motion, a second for, to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's you.